Jeff's gonna do it.
Yeah.
Jeff is okay.
Matt should show up sometime.
Matt.
Matt's gonna come in probably right during the Pledge of Allegiance, my prediction.
We're gonna do an over and under now, man, are we?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Chris is in someplace a lot warmer.
Oh, yeah.
Mexico.
Yeah.
Thankful.
I think she's missing out though with that weather.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, I could, and the wind really brought it right down my, right over the town, just like. Just like you planned.
Yes.
You gotta send Craig out on a bank.
Are we alienating Mr. Dickman?
Yeah, Jeff, you wanna, well, Matt's, Matt's gonna show up.
I, I jumped over once, so I was leaving Matt's spot there.
That's big deal. We're getting there.
That would be a lot of trouble down there.
I would avoid giving him the exact address.
I told him don't do that.
Show up with a full manure spray.
Yep.
Just in time.
Got about thirty seconds, man. Let me just shift that over here.
Yeah, absolutely. Right over to Matt. He likes the papers too, Eric tells me.
You're that quick to handle it off. You prepped, I, I felt guilty, I slowed down on the way here. I know you were tired.
My, my guess was, uh, Pledge of Allegiance, that's what I thought you were gonna walk in.
You're all putting bets on me?
So you can count backwards?
Alright, how we doing?
Alright.
How are you?
Good. You ready to bail me out? There we go, alright.
Alright, it is seven o'clock, so.
I'll just be a minute, thank you.
Nope, you're alright. We're almost there. Technology.
I apologize, my wife, um, got an award, so I wanted to go see that.
You chose the right spot to be. No, you go ahead.
Do you wanna use that? I mean, you can. Well, I don't necessarily need it, right?
Alright, no you don't.
I'll play with that later. Alright. You ready?
Yep.
Are you guys all ready?
Yep.
See, you should've got it going.
I should've.
Alright, um, do you have a digital time?
Seven oh two.
Alright, it is seven oh two. Uh, um, call the meeting to order. So, today is Monday, November eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, Board of Education Regular Meeting, Thonopla Kellogg, uh, Early Childhood Center, and seven oh two. Alright, um, first order of business is roll call the board, please. Uh, Powers, here. Houston. Dickman, here. Smith.
Here.
Winger.
Here.
Brock.
Here.
Hess. Alright, thank you. And with that, uh, if we'd all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, the flag is in the back corner.
Before we do that, can we just take a moment to acknowledge, uh, Veterans Day today? And, uh, you know, it's because of those veterans that we have the right to gather here and, and, and say the pledge. So it just feels like it's appropriate that we honor that, and I don't know if we could even have a moment of silence.
Absolutely.
Prior to, to that, for those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice and their families.
Thank you. Three, two, one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, uh, so we have the adoption of the agenda. If, if somebody would like to make a motion to accept the agenda as presented, or make an adjustment, now is the time.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Alright. So, uh, motion by, motion by Winger and support by Brock, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing there's no discussion, we'll take a vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, board, motion carries. Alright, and that takes us to public communication, public input. I do not have the spiel. Oh, I do have the spiel, thanks. It's, it's okay, we, we had it covered either way.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, members of the public may address the Board of Education during public comment for up to three minutes. Speakers will be recognized by the presiding officer, and are assessed based on name, address, and group affiliation if applicable. As a reminder, all comments shall be directed to the board and not to staff or other participants. No participant may speak more than once. Participants may not behave in a manner that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of the meeting. The Board of Education does not respond to public comment. The superintendent will follow up with speakers when appropriate. At this time, we'll begin public comment. Uh, I do not have any cards, does anybody from the public want to speak? Does anybody from the public want to speak? Alright, thank you, that will close public comment. And we already had our moment of silence. Alright, that takes us to consent grouping. And, let's see. I usually have this pulled up, I apologize.
A motion that we approve the consent grouping items as presented.
Alright, we got a motion by.
Support.
Smith. And support by Winger. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote, please. Powers. Yes. Um, Dickman, yes. Smith?
Yes.
Winger?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Thank you, board, motion carries. Alright, and that takes us to board items for information. Lee Elementary Building.
We have Megan Wonders with us tonight, she's gonna run through a presentation about Lee, the great things that are happening there. So, thanks for being here.
Thank you, you stole my intro, so. I just say, thank you for having me, it's just a great opportunity to, to come in and brag about the things that are happening at Lee that I'm very proud of. So, um, this is my second year as principal there, and just continuing to be impressed by our staff and students there. So, to walk you through, um, I have.
Is it turned on, on the side?
There we go.
Batters were just working, oh, wait a minute. Mark, did you pull out? Is it inserted into your computer? That needs to be inserted into your computer.
Oh, the USB, yeah, the.
Yeah.
This little guy.
Yeah.
You have one of those?
Yeah, it's supposed to be in there. There we go. There, alright. Dave, I was gonna say, just a sec.
Alright, so, um, I'm just gonna walk us through some highlights that are happening at Lee based upon our strategic plan. So, our first area, um, would be the academics and programs, so our plan is to implement opportunities to meet the needs of all learners. So, to talk through a couple ways that we are doing that at Lee. We really focus on our tier one, two, and three instructions, so our tier one being our core instruction where we're working to identify and target, um, what are the needs of our students based on what is our core curriculum and standards that we've identified through our PLC process that are essential standards. From there, our tier two would be our interventions, and so, looking at what are maybe some deficit areas of students, how are we going to address those with research-based curriculum? And, um, again, just making sure we're meeting the needs of each and every student there. Tier three would be students that need that additional time, so that could be additional minutes or additional times throughout the week, um, where we need to remediate further to make sure we're, um, closing that gap for students that might have holes from previous years. Then, um, we also use our special education and behavior intervention alongside all of those things, um, to weed through what are different accommodations we need to make for students so that we can reach them academically. So, all of this kind of works right along with that PLC process that we're working on across the district. And I like to say that when we're finding our collaborative process, we really have been doing a good job for many years at Lee, working as a team, but now using, um, it more efficiently, our meeting times, making sure we're using more, um, intentional data and doing so more frequently. So, we have our partner monitoring things, but just being more intentional with what we're doing during that time and on a more frequent basis. Um, one conversation I loved was asking, you know, our specialist teachers that said, can we, um, focus our time meeting that, to talk about some behaviors that we're seeing and so we can compare if we're seeing these in the other, um, in each other's rooms and how maybe some of us are handling that and what are some things that are working? So, I love that conversation, um, that here's a challenge that I was facing, and who can help me with this, and how can we work together to, um, make it a win situation for everybody involved? So, along with that, um, it's just planning instruction, we wanted not only look at what is our core instruction, what do we need to remediate, but also for those students that are showing us they're proficient at the level that we are presenting them with, how do we look at, how do we advance that? What can we do to challenge them? Um, so, speaking to, um, as a grade level, we look at what are our must-dos, so, keeping it consistent instruction, um, that they can all team and plan together, and we're talking either eight or nine sections of teachers all bringing together that brain power to figure out, you know, how are we gonna attack this curriculum and present it to our students? Um, beyond that then, our new curriculum provides us with so many options, um, some of the pictures you see here, our foundational kit would allow us, um, opportunities to target and remediate those skills that are possibly a year or so below grade level. Um, we have a language development kit, so we have our EL students, um, we're, you know, at times having students come in who don't speak the language whatsoever, and so how do we work in, yes, having them be a part of the core instruction, but then also use this as a tool to provide them with that basic, um, learning of the English language? The next picture there is the instructional routines handbook, so, um, having that common language amongst our teachers as to, here are some routines we are all gonna be consistent with, so, that allows us just to know what are we presenting them with, and then for intervention too, then we know, okay, this is what we have tried, here is where we can maybe attack it with something different. And then, uh, the last picture is our wonderworks, so that would be intervention materials that, um, are through the new program as well, so, for our students that maybe just need another run-through of that core material, um, this gives options for that. So, um, students who, um, maybe are struggling with some of the reading comprehension in class, don't need a whole separate intervention, um, to work on decoding or something like that, but just another run-through of that material at a slower pace, um, and a few more times with it could meet that standard. Another piece I wanted to talk about was, in summer school, um, is, is not necessarily just a Lee thing, um, it's something near and dear to my heart that I was a part of that prior to becoming principal, so I really wanted to draw attention to, um, Lee in particular, because we have a really large population of students and staff that participate in the summer school program. So, this, um, prior summer, and this is thanks to, um, you know, Kim Tasso for getting grant money to allow this to take place, because that is a huge component of it, to be able to say, hey, we can offer this free summer school to you. Um, and then Nathan Fisher at Lee, and Marty Lambens at McFall, and Allison Muka at Page really worked to get this organized. Um, but overall, we had seventy-two Lee students who participated this prior summer, eight Lee teachers, um, participated as instructional, um, teachers this summer, so they were definitely the majority of students that, um, took part in the summer program. And out of those, eighty-one percent of those students either maintained their level or increased their level over the summer. And really, our mission at summer, I always say, is to maintain, um, just because we're not seeing them every day or for long extended periods of time, but we wanna hang on to those skills that they gained from that prior year so we can hit the ground running in fall. And eighty-one percent is a really great number of students to participate over the summer to maintain that. So, where did that leave us this fall, was that our incoming scores were nearly in all areas ten percent higher than last fall where we came in. So, I'm really excited about that to see, hey, we're coming in ten percent, where can we go by the end of the year? So, um, I'm really hopeful we can continue that programming and, um, have that advantage coming into the fall every year, because that really makes such a difference. Another piece of programming is, um, field trips and hands-on experiences that teachers are connecting to science and social studies, um, connections, while a great deal of our focus at our level goes to reading and math, we still wanna tie in those other pieces. So, just to highlight a couple, I mean, our staff, honestly, they do a great job of seeking out grants. Um, I actually had a substitute in the building today who said, I really kept wondering, why, why do they keep coming and asking for this money? What, what is this really going to? And as a substitute, she attended the field trip today, and she said, that was amazing, I love that they do that, um, I, I hope this continues on, and so, um, and that was our second graders who went to Pierce Cedar Creek, um, today, and what they did was build, um, they engineered dispersal machines, they go out into the field that they're working to, um, restore, and they disperse the seeds. And they also do service projects where they remove and collect milkweed seeds and plant them to attract butterflies. So, tying into their second grade standards, um, they plan these trips to Pierce Cedar Creek and work right alongside, um, the instructors there. And so, um, just, it was great to hear an outside perspective on, we felt it was valuable, but to have someone else say that they saw the value in it and how great of a trip it was. Um, and then, the picture we're deciding here, this is something new this year, we have a third grade teacher, um, piloting this out this year, worked to get a grant through the Michigan DNR, um, it's the Salmon in the Classroom Grant. And so, they will work through their science standards of, um, working through life cycles to, um, connect with, uh, Michigan Natural Resources, and then they work on maintaining the tank here in for the fish, and then they release them, um, in the springtime. So, we have a teacher who has worked to, um, get that grant money and has that in place to connect to science in there, so, um, just one room this year, I'm trying that out, it was something new, so, just some new and exciting things going on. Next area is, uh, learning environment and culture, so, providing exemplary learning environments for students and staff. So, how do we do that at Lee? Um, this was something new last year that we tried, and we continued it this year and are having really good success with this. So, we use, um, Dojo Rewards, which is an online app to track, uh, points for students in real time. So, all of our staff has access, and the way that we work the Dojo points is working as a team. So, this is based on classes earning together to try to promote that teamwork, um, all working towards the same goal. So, um, right now, all of our second graders earned, actually in, um, mid-October, all of our second graders had earned the first reward working together, and our third graders are almost there as well. Um, but it is all about working together to, um, follow what we set as our standards for behavior there. And this is our support staff, specialist teachers, um, office staff, anybody who's recognizing our classes with these behaviors can award these points. So, these are our main targets that they are working on, um, safety, helping others on task at appropriate level in the hallway, just to help maintain our learning atmosphere. And, um, once a class earns these points, it's announced on our weekly announcements, and they get their rewards. So, their first reward was fifteen minutes of extra recess with me, so, um, that was actually really nice, that, so my demo really got after that, because we had some great weather, so, as a person who gets cold easy, I was really excited that they were taking that one, uh, early. But we really, um, emphasize our three, um, standards that we work for, be safe, be respectful, be responsible, we have them posted, um, right when you come into the building, and that is just what we're constantly pressing for and asking, are you being safe? Are you being responsible? And, um, reviewing those with students. And so, they can also, outside of the Dojo points, earn TK tickets individually, so, um, we have that component as well, and every week, five students from each grade level is called down to select a prize if their tickets can get pulled. Which is kind of an interesting little lesson too, because I actually heard the middle school, um, talking about how students were banking their points, and so, they have like collections of tickets, and I'll go through it, I'm like, there are a lot of so-and-so in here, because they held on to them, so they're like learning, okay, I'm not gonna toss one in the big bucket, I'm gonna wait till I have a handful of tickets and toss them in and improve my chances. So, um, it's fun to hear them get excited about it and.
Teaching statistics there.
The next area is communications and community engagement, so, talking about how are we going to engage students, staff, and parents in the community all together and, and work towards those common goals. So, a couple of things, um, we have, specifically, we work, um, on the Choose to Include initiative. So, this partners with, um, the Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools, and so, we work together, um, to raise awareness, celebrate our differences. Um, October is our big kickoff month, so, our student council works hand-in-hand with this, which I will talk about as well, but it's introducing kids to different topics through, um, age-appropriate books in the library, and then, we'll do some sort of day, um, to recognize and, and bring awareness to it. So, in the picture here, you can see all dressed in purple, um, epilepsy awareness was a day we had, dressed in purple, and students learned about what is epilepsy in the library. Um, and we do announcements where they share little bits of information, uh, with the whole school, so just trying to raise awareness to that. And then, over in this picture is our Special Olympics team that went in this event, um, if you ever have time, it's a really amazing thing to experience. So, Caldonia hosted this year, um, and our Special Olympics faculty team, um, went, and it was great, our building was out, cheering, I, I don't know if you've been, like, footballing, had nothing on these kids cheering these kids off, um, on their way. So, they went and participated, um, and we had students who are linkers who went alongside, um, those students and helped support the game, and, um, it, it just warms your heart to see what goes on there. So, if you ever can participate in one of these events, I, I definitely would recommend you do it, so. And then, as I mentioned, our student council, um, they do a lot with our inclusion initiative, with, um, reading the announcements and helping to pass along that information to their peers. Um, they work to promote TK spirit, um, fundraising that comes back to the building for different events, um, they support things like kid foods basket, they, um, are doing a food drive right now, actually. Um, so just teaching them about what it means to be a representative for your class, and, um, they tie it a little bit to comparing representatives in our government and things to get them idea of, you know, how might this look as an adult, and so giving them a taste of what that is. So, um, in this picture, actually, you'll see they are really cute, they will do their announcements promoting, um, whatever it is that we're wanting to teach them about for awareness and that, and they have some great jokes that they share as well. So, Mrs. Borzma and, um, Mrs. Gonzalez do a great job of heading that group up. For finance, um, how will we accomplish the goals of the strategic plan, uh, responsibly? So, a couple of things I was gonna highlight was just the use of funds in our building, so I know we've talked a lot about the new, um, ELA resource, our wonders resource, so, um, we also have our Big Ideas Math resource. Finance for reading is something that we use in our interventions, so funding a lot of those research-based practices that we use there as well. Um, we do have some online components that we utilize to enhance things, um, through our iXL and Reflex Math, and then also supporting our specials, so, um, the clay projects that Lee does, haven't had one of these from home yet, the kids, um, they, they just love and are so proud of what, what they come up with. So, um, that is something really neat, the musical instruments that are provided, Mrs. Philippiak does an outstanding job of just introducing many, many different things, um, to our students at this age. And, um, you can see the PE, the bowling equipment, so, um, just incorporating, I was actually just in there today and watched, we were talking about, like, have you guys ever been on a real bowling alley? Because that's a skill they're learning, but just tying it into other, um, gross motor skills and things that they're practicing and finding ways to connect it to real life, all, all three of our specialist teachers do an amazing job of doing that. And then I also was gonna mention our PTO and how we raise a lot of funds through our Walk-a-Bone, just because that is a, a big piece of how we do some of the extras that we do. They're great at, um, helping to surprise those, or provide the prizes for our, um, TK ticket winners, um, that's where a lot of the funds for that come from. Assemblies, um, field trip transportation, snacks, playground equipment, um, we, we source a lot of things through that money that's raised at the Walk-a-Bone, so I thought definitely worth mentioning that, that supports us also. Um, operations, so how are we supporting that learning for students in our building? So, just a couple of things to show you, we did get, and I know this was kind of around the district as well, um, but the new cafeteria tables, that was really handy, because I tell you, those things are getting hard to lift up, so, really happy with the new ones, you could like, something or just lift those up. So, I know the support staff especially is really excited about that, um, but just improving some of our settings around the building, and then, um, one thing we're working on, and I'm trying to look for some grants as well to help fund this, but improving our playground, um, to incorporate, we have, the K-one ASD room is also at Lee. And so, not all of our equipment necessarily suits the needs of all of our students, and so, being part of this inclusion initiative and how much we're involved in that, we've really have been talking a lot about what else can we add, um, to make it available to, to all needs on our playground. So, um, just a couple of pictures there, communication board was suggested and a different type of swing, so, unfortunately, a lot of these things are much more expensive than you would imagine, so, we're trying to be creative about where we can look for some grant funding and also working with the PTO to see if we can, um, have some of those things added in. So, um, right now, we have our, our sandbox, which we have enhanced and definitely added to, because that is a, um, very popular item for the, uh, all of our kids to gather at, so. Um, but that's what I have for you tonight, um, mainly just that I think our focus is, um, really goes along with the foundation piece of the PLC, that it is how are we meeting the needs of all students? And that's really something that I think, um, our staff really strives to do at Lee, is recognize the need in all of our students and how can we work together to accomplish that. Thank you for listening tonight, I appreciate the time.
Hey, Megan. Um, Lee has always been really pretty successful in, um, all the interventions and things that, uh, you did, you do to help the students. Do you feel that, um, the PLC structure has been enhancing that?
I do, I think we had a lot of the pieces already in place, I think it helped to formalize a lot of processes, um, that we had in place, make them more regular, um, I, I think it's just enhancing a, a culture and system that existed, um, definitely just improving on that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's been helpful to see how can we be better at some of the things that were already going well.
Alright, thank you, yeah.
It's fun to, to thank you, um, that was a wonderful presentation, I loved how you flowed through, um, talked about everything, and, um, it's so much fun to hear about our little ones. Any other comments or questions?
So, I'm new to the acronym world, but is it the MTSS that had a state award? And Lee was recognized in both reading and behavior, but golden behavior, right? So, just wanted to say, I didn't see that in the presentation, but that's really good work on your part for creating that good culture.
Thank you, and I did mention this, and I have to, if I could take one more second, I'm sorry, but, um, it was, when you talk about our students' behavior, I. But it was, when you talk about our students' behavior, I was able to go down with three of our third-grade classrooms, went down to Carment Village today for Veterans Day, and had a presentation where they sang and presented cards to the veterans there. And I, so many pieces of it were just so moving. I appreciated the teachers, Jane Nabet and Danielle Nowinski and Vicki Borzma, who put it together. Unfortunately, you could not take, it would be overwhelming to have the entire school or grade level, so we limited it. But the interaction and the maturity that are, I have never seen a third graders look so mature. It was just very impressive. They represented Lee and TK very well. And at one point, one of the veterans actually stood and sang with the kids. It was just very, I'm like, this is community, this is what we want. And so seeing our students do that, it was amazing today. So, I didn't have that in my presentation because it just happened today, but wanted to mention.
Great to hear, though. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing.
Thank you very much. All right, anything else? All right, moving along to committee and liaison reporting.
We had no subcommittee meetings this past month.
All right.
We're moving on.
Yep, we're going on. All right, board items for action. All right, superintendent's evaluation. So with, with the legislative changes, we, that went into effect this year, we gave Mr. McCarthy an effective rating that is the highest rating available. We love you still. Appreciate all of your work. Is a wonderful servant to the community, wonderful servant to the school district, and we appreciate that. So, with that, looking for a motion to approve the, to rating? Or any other commentary?
Not necessarily my place to speak on this one yet, but I was just going to say that for everybody involved, the legislative changes took the staff evaluation ratings from four different rating categories down to three rating categories. So, in prior three years, I had an effective, highly effective, and highly effective ratings. And this year, the highest rating is effective, so.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approves Superintendent Craig McCarthy's rating as effective in his 2024-2025 performance evaluation.
Support.
Okay. That's okay. Rock, paper, scissors? All right. I'll go with them. We'll go with Dave, that's what the secretary is writing down. All right. Okay, motion by Powers, support by Smith. Is there any further discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Powers?
Yes.
Dickman, yes. Smith?
Yes.
Winger?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Thank you, board, motion carries. All right, last week, we met for the superintendent's search consultant approval. We had Michigan Leadership Institute, MLI, and we had MASP, Michigan Association of School Boards. They both gave wonderful presentations, both very professional, both very thorough. We have used both in the past. And I, again, I thanked you then, Dave, but I want to thank you again. It was a great idea to have both of them come. Because on paper, they, they look the same. Even in person, you got different vibes, so it's kind of like where you were, where you're feeling. But I appreciate that because that, that gave some separation to me. But both were wonderful companies. At this point, it's kind of up to the board of where you want to go. Because this will be four to, four to five-month process.
Yeah, I think we could work with either one. I think all things considered, I think that we'd probably feel more comfortable with working with MLI than with MASP. But that would be my, my take on it. But either one would work fine.
I would agree. I think the central office record that we had through MLI spoke volumes in comparison. Both were great presentations, but that definitely gave an edge, in my opinion, for MLI.
Yeah, I agree with both of those opinions.
The, the one thing I, I really heard just mentioned a lot was the MLI superintendent, Central Office Administration Network they had. And I think it's a special role, right?
Yeah.
I think you have to be in it to understand the dynamics really at play. On the surface, everybody, you know, it's like, oh yeah, I could do that. And then, once you live in those shoes for a little bit, it feels differently. So I think that that was important, and that was the, the majority of their network, or the majority of their team, was retired superintendents. So, that was, that was big for me with MLI. Any thoughts, Mr. Dickman?
When we've worked with them in the past, they've, I think they've done a great job with that. So I would.
Okay.
Would have no issue with that.
Well, this is wonderful, then. Okay, looking for a motion to move forward with MLI for the search firm?
I'll make a motion that we proceed with MLI as our search firm for a new superintendent.
Support.
Right, so we got a motion by Winger and support by Smith. Is there any further discussion? Seeing there's no further discussion, we'll take a vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, board, motion carries. All right, in the middle of that time, we have a new hire proposal out. We've, we've kind of had this out, and then it was, it was wonderful, kind of a name came up. So I reached out to Mr. Ensland, who is a former superintendent at TK, long-term resident, long-term employee. And I talked to him on the phone, he was super energetic. Very energetic, loves the district, loves, loves the community, wanted to help out. And we set up some interviews, you know, we just met in small groups, and I was in the last group. And after three times of going through everything, he was still super energetic. He was super excited. He was ready to go. And I was like, man, he got me energized. It was like, okay. So, you know, I, I have absolutely no qualms. I am very excited to propose to the board that Mr. Ensland take the interim superintendent role. Thoughts by the rest of the board?
I would agree. I think having worked with Mr. Ensland in the past, I think his level of experience in the role and his familiarity with our district, and many of the administrators that are, are in place, I, I think he's a, I don't think we could ask for a better person to, to fill this role at this level. So I would highly recommend, and I'll make the motion.
Sure.
If it's not too soon, to approve Tom Ensland as interim superintendent of the Thornapple Kellogg Schools, effective January 1, 2025, and then authorize as the board president to negotiate an interim superintendent contract.
Support.
All right, we got. All right, we got a motion by Dickman and support by Smith with a minor skirmish on the, on the south side of the people. All right, is there any discussion by the board?
I did want to clarify, the John Deere shirt I was wearing was not just for fun. I was coming from work, so. Okay, all right.
If you don't mind, let's vote first, then. Or it depends what you're going to say. Do you want us to vote first or most last? Okay. All right, that would be, let's see, we had time for comments, yes. Roll call vote, please.
Powers?
Yes.
Dickman, yes. Smith?
Yes.
Winger?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Thank you, board, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Ensland, you head the floor.
Well, before I say anything or thank anybody, I'd like to introduce my wife, Lisa. I know she would have liked this, but we all need to thank her. Because she's been down this road, and that she is willing to let me do this again is unbelievable. So, thank you, and thank you to the board for this opportunity. Thank you to the board and Craig, and all of the administrators and staff, teachers, support staff. For leading the district, I think, this building, my goodness, it's spectacular. This was our vision way back, Dave, that it's come to fruition, it's just amazing. So, thank you for leading the district in such great shape. I can't believe I'm saying this, but I'm truly excited to be a superintendent again. So, beginning on January 1, I'm going to roll the sleeves up and do all I can to help support this great district. Been here for, actually, I did my student teacher year forty-one years ago with Steve Evans. And we lived here for the better part of thirty years, raised three children. And when I just had this calling, it really wasn't a difficult decision. I love this place. We love this place, and so I'm excited to get going again. You and I got to get to know each other, do that real fast.
And, and nobody thanks you more than me.
Thank you, Mr. Ensland. Yeah, I was going to say, now you can, you can relax. Last month and a half, yeah. All right.
Don't relax too much.
No, no, I won't.
I would say it speaks volumes when a, a man is in an interview and says, I still need to cook breakfast for my wife in the mornings. That speaks volumes to you.
Just not early, I think.
Four thirty.
It's not just toast.
All right, we have just a interesting legal thing, insulin litigation resolution. So, Mr. McCarthy can explain it better than I can, but it's just an opportunity for us, I guess.
Yeah, I just, yeah, quick little blurb here that I put together. But the extreme increases, increases in national insulin prices have resulted in a class-action lawsuit. Our health insurance third-party administrator, West Michigan Health Insurance Pool, has joined the lawsuit on behalf of their clients. Well, Trune Law, our legal representatives, suggested that schools join the lawsuit separately in case the third-party administrator gets kicked out from the lawsuit. That way, the schools would still be represented if they are signed on to the lawsuit individually. So, like most of these types of things, it could be a long, drawn-out process. The outcome's unknown. But if there's a decision that favors the school district, there may be a monetary impact. And then with all class-action lawsuits like this, any legal fees will be paid out of case proceeds. So it's not like the district is laying out any money for the lawsuit. It's just, we have the potential of possibly earning some funds down the road, depending on if there is a monetary settlement.
Thank you. All right, does the board have any questions? Okay, looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the attached insulin litigation resolution as presented.
I'll support.
Okay, got a motion by Winger, support by Brock. Is there any further discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Powers?
Yes.
Dickman, yes. Smith?
Yes.
Winger?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Thank you, board, motion carries. All right, and that takes us down to superintendent's report.
All right, just a few things. The pool, we've been waiting for four years to get into pool. It opened today. We had several middle school students take advantage of the opportunity and went in and swam after school today. We also had a couple of people stop into the office, super excited about buying a year-long pass so that they could use the pool. So, that's a win in my mind. I'm excited to see how much the pool's going to get used. So, that's one thing. I mentioned this, I think, to the board before, but Move Media, owned by John Garner, a TK alum, is working on two videos to promote the school district. One is really just an introduction to the school district. What do we have going on here that's great for the community? And then another one is all about the improvements that we've made to the facilities over the last five years. So he should have, next week, a draft of his first video that I can go through and see if there's any tweaks. But so far, he's got great footage, was here for homecoming, the homecoming game, everything that happened during homecoming week. And then has interviewed staff up and down the district, so that we have people that are giving testimonials about the school district. So that's great. SEC, Secure Environment Consultants, has completed their review of our facilities. They're planning to be here to do a verbal presentation to the board of their findings in December, as long as everything goes accordingly. But while they were pleased with what they found, as far as our security measures, I'm sure, like any security company, they're going to have ideas for improvement for us. But that's coming down the pike. And then I want to thank Jeff Dickman for stepping up over the past year, filling the role on the board. I appreciate your calm, professional demeanor and your straightforward comments and questions. They furthered the discussion at the board table, and so I've appreciated you being here with us for the last year. So thank you.
My privilege.
And that's all I have.
All right. Just to, so that takes us to board comments, just to speak more about it. Jeff Dickman filled in a position. And the way the legal part works is, since he filled in, at the next regular election, the person fills in once that's certified. So then, Mr. Mark Price will be taking his place in December. Thank you very much. Everything Craig said, appreciate you coming out, appreciate you helping us out, appreciate you being on the board.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? I, I appreciate everybody pitching in, especially Derek. I'm sorry, you did all the prep work and then I snuck in. You were ready to go, I know.
Saved the heart attack for another day.
All right, with that.
We got a get-together for Craig we got to talk about, though, right? It's at December?
We, oh, sorry, it's the open house.
It was a surprise.
December 3rd?
It was in my email, I don't know what kind of surprise.
Yeah, I believe it's here, right?
Yes, December 3rd, here, from 3:00 to 5:30? 3:06?
3:06, okay. All right. Okay. Anything else? All right, 7:44, meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Didn't even have to get up to three-minute time.